I'd like to call tonight's budget meeting to order, please, for Tuesday, September 2nd. Could we have a determination of quorum, please?
Lehman, Maher, Roberts, Stroman, Pettigrew, Seacrest, Beberdorff, Evans, Meyer, Tamang, we have a quorum.
And I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. Can I have a motion to a drop tonight's agenda, please?
Second.
Agenda has been approved. Can we have a vote on that? Those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I have not received any public comment requests, so I think we will move past that. And we'll go into the non-public hearing items. And that's, we just have one item, and that's our budget discussion. And I don't have any public comment requests for the non-consent items. So we will move right into the budget discussion and modifications. And I would like to make a few remarks if I could do so, please. I know I've received some feedback from people on why are we having another budget session? This is my third year on the council. And it seems as we work through the year, all of us have said to each other, where did that come from? We didn't approve that. Where was that hidden? So I believe it was in the best interest of the council and the best interest of the people we serve to have budget hearings, which we did, and we all appreciated those. And to have this budget hearing. So we fully understand what we are approving. And this is our last chance to make any modifications. The city budget does require a first and second reading. And that, you know, allows for public input. And the city council time to review the final adoption. It's a two-step process legally binding, and there's no need to rush through this. We went through the first reading. And that is a proposal formally introduced by the city council and made public for the first time. At the public hearing for the second reading is announced, giving the public time to review what we've just approved in the first reading. No voting or public comment or extensive debate takes place at this stage. The goal is to get the process started and inform all parties. The second reading is the final phase where the budget is debated, amended, and ultimately approved. And that's what we want to do here tonight. This is a formal meeting, allowing residents and community members to voice their opinions. And this ensures that the budget aligns with our community's needs. Council members can debate the budget, propose amendments, and reallocate funds based on committee recommendations and feedback. It's our job as city officials to review and understand all the details, preventing costly errors or overlooked issues. So that is why I've called this meeting. There's been discussion among many council members. Some I agree with, some I don't disagree with. And I think this is a perfect opportunity for us to understand what we are in agreement with and what we are in disagreement with, so we can approve the budget at its second and final reading. So that would be my comments. I sent all of the council a list of items that I've been, have been addressed with to bring up and discuss. And I'll just go down the list, and if some of you want to chide in, go ahead and make your comments. One of the items that a councilman asked me was, it appears that the senior citizen organizations Canyon Lake and Minna Lousans, their budgets were reduced by $2,500 each. And I guess people want to reinstate that. So those that would want to comment on that, I ask for your comments, please. Kevin Maher.
Thank you, Chair. I'll make a comment about the senior citizens. I'm fine with restoring that $2,500 to each one. And when we get to the $60,000 for the one center, I think we should take that out of our contingency, the council's contingency fund, so we don't make a material interest. With that, I would just like to ask our finance director, what, and if you and Joel were going to talk about, what is considered a material change to the budget which would require us to move this process down the road?
Go ahead, Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city attorney and I had a lot of discussions on this, and I don't want to necessarily speak for him. But I think in general, what is frustrating is that there's not clear guidance in state statute as to what that accounts to or what that amounts to. And so if you would look from an accounting standard, if it's more than a couple of percent, that would be a material change. And so when you're looking at possibly $2,500 for a community investment, that's a negligible amount. I would not say from an accounting standard, that's a difference. But then if you're going to be funding something for the first time, even if it's $10,000, you know, that someone may say the public wasn't notified about that, and we're not, you know, certain that you're giving, or we weren't aware that you're considering giving taxpayer dollars to a brand-new entity. That could be meaningful. So I don't want to speak for the city attorney. Maybe Joel would have a better explanation than that.
Joel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The language in the statute is actually substantially altered. And as our finance officer stated, it isn't really defined. This was a change made several years back. I think it's important when you think about what the purpose of the statute is, that you understand what was going on is ordinance would go to first reading, and then it would go to second reading, and it would be in a certain form. Well, of course, at the council meeting on the second reading, the council would still debate it and might make amendments to it. Well, sometimes those amendments, people didn't like, and they said, well, if I had known that was what you were going to do, I would have shown up at the meeting and spoke on it. And so the idea was, before it became final, if you make a significant change or substantially alter it, as the language the statute uses, then you have to continue second reading so people can have an opportunity to respond to it. Again, statute doesn't define what that is. Now, we can all think of situations that if you made a change tonight and you approved it, it probably isn't going to create any controversy and nobody, the likelihood of somebody challenging the budget is pretty low. So you could say, well, that's a low risk. However, again, if somebody, you were to judge that incorrectly, and somebody were to challenge the budget, then you are potentially throwing the whole city budget into question, which is a big risk. So I believe, and Daniel can correct me if I'm wrong, but the statutory requirement is that you have the budget approved by the end of the month, that the tax levy be sent. So I guess the question I would have to you, if there's any risk, and it's now September 2nd, and you make changes to the budget, I think the question you need to ask yourself, is it worth the risk at all to not just continue it and have second reading at, you know, in the second meeting in September? Why you wouldn't do that, I guess? Because any change you make is potentially, somebody could argue is substantially altered. Now, if you had $2,000 and you don't cut anything to the senior center, is that likely to result? Could you make, could I go into court and make the argument that you did substantially alter it? Sure. So. But if I'm wrong, or if a judge disagrees, that's a pretty big risk. So it's really, we're here to advise you, at the end of the day, you need to understand what the risk is and decide whether you want to proceed tonight or continue it to a later reading if you make alterations to the budget. The more you alter, the more likely it is a substantial alteration.
Thank you, Joel. So I guess I'd like to take these one item at a time. And the first item I had was the $2,500 for each senior citizen center. My next item is the $60,000 to the Minna Lousan. So Daniel, how could you advise us to handle the $2,500 so we aren't in violation and get into trouble? Please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, $2,500, I don't think is necessarily substantial to be on the ultra-conservative side. I think definitely you could make a motion to add that. And then with that being said, your next council meeting, September 16th, 15th, we would have a second reading. I think that probably is the safest bet. With it being two $2,500 changes, that probably is not. But I think as the city attorney brought up, there's always risk. And so I think that probably would be the safest course of action. Or as Councillor Maher brought up, you do have sufficient money in your council, or in your council contingency that we could do that for this year even.
Councilman Stroman?
Thank you, Chair. I did a little quick math. $2,500 out of a $337 million budget is .00000742 percent. I don't think there's a court anywhere in the world that would say that that's a substantial change. So I think we're fussing a lot about nothing right here. I think we need to make those changes to restore that money. I think we need to put Minna Lousan up to $60,000, because they have some things that they're doing that serve our veterans, serve our elderly, serve people that really need that money. And I think it's a slap in the face to them to try to cut their budget by $2,500 in a $337 million budget. So where we get that $60,000, I have my own ideas. If we want to take it out of the council contingency fund, I'm fine with that, because I'm going to want to address that council contingency fund also.
Councilman Maher?
Thank you, yeah. I would just add that if we're into the $60,000, I mean, we have the capacity to take that out of the 2025 budget and not try to use that as a material change. Let's just go ahead and help the center. And it was really a compelling story to hear that Meals on Wheels is losing their kitchen. And by remodeling the kitchen at the senior center, that will allow Meals on Wheels to prepare meals. And we're investing the $60,000 in a building which we own. So I think it's something we should do now, and not, we don't have to wait until next year.
Thank you.
So Councilman Maher, are you saying take the $2,500 each out of the contingency fund along with the $60,000?
We could do that.
I mean, and then avoid having to have to do another second reading. And I would make the motion that we take the two $2,500 and the $60,000 out of the 2025 council contingency fund and use that for these three items.
Mr. Evans, you want to chime in here?
Yes, since that's already budgeted and approved for the council to spend for this year. We don't really discuss that now. We do that at a council meeting to approve that contingency spending. So am I not correct?
How, if you would like to use the 2025 council contingency, what I would recommend is that I would prepare a report for the council to take action at your next council meeting on September 15th to make that adjustment. We then would be able to provide checks to those entities the next day, so September 16th. And then in a subsequent council supplemental appropriation, we would true up the numbers to show that change.
Okay, that's what I thought. And I'm with Mr. Stroman. This adding $2,500, $5,000 to this budget is silly to even talk about when we're spending millions in all these other departments. So I say we just add that $5,000 into this budget for the year and be done with it there. The 60 to come out of our current unspent contingency, we can prove and get them the checks right away so they get that kitchen built. There you go. So people know, the county is, the current Meals on Wheels kitchen is over in the high-rise here. The county has decided to decommission that kitchen. And all that professional food handling equipment, which is several hundred thousand dollars with, is going to be moved over to the Minna Lousa. And so this fund, these funds would go to help them rebuild their kitchen, incorporate this professional-level stuff. That's what's going on. Thank you.
Councilwoman Seacrest?
Thank you, Chair. I, Mr. Evans just answered some of my questions, was I had heard through just an email, little information on the Meals on Wheels eviction notice out of their present location, or I don't know if that's the right term, but notice that they needed to move out of their present location. I was just curious on the space needs and wondering on the accommodations at the Minna Lousahans. So some additional information there, not having really had any information provided thus far. I'm absolutely in support of that. And the Meals on Wheels is just incredible organization and just a tremendous service. So I'd be in support of taking that out of the council contingency, but with just appropriate information to understand what we're funding and why. And thank you.
I think I probably messed up our Roberts Rules of Orders, because there was a motion and a second, and we did not vote on that. Councilman Maher, would you want to repeat your motion, please?
Sure, I make the motion that we use the council contingency fund for 2025 and to cover both the $2,500 items and the $60,000 for the kitchen. Might add, just before I shut up, my understanding is we have $198,000 in that contingency fund, and we get, you know, we have four or five months left. So let's do something good with it. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just reiterate, I want to be clear. I think Mr. Ainsley was correct, that because that was not noticed tonight for this meeting, that we should, that should be direction to staff to take the $60,000 and that Mr. Ainsley brings back a item on the agenda for you to specifically authorize the $60,000 out of this year's budget. I'm fine, you know. I think the $2,000, I would agree, if you're not taking it from somebody else, like if you were reducing another organization's allocation, they might feel it was significant. But because you're not, the $2,000 is a small amount, per $5,000 for the total budget is a small amount. And it's not coming, the very low risk to do that action tonight and still approve second reading.
Councilwoman Seacrest?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to make a substitute motion that we allocate the $2,500 to both the Minna Lousahan and the Canyon Lake Activity Center out of council contingency for 2026 budget.
Do we have a second on the motion? Second by Stroman? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So in reference to the $60,000, that's, okay, okay, okay. All right, thank you. The next item that we were presented with was the $250,000. I call it the birthday fund for our July 4th event next year. There's been some discussion on that. So with that, I'll go to Councilman Evans.
Well, since this, I think it's a worthwhile allocation of funds, because we don't really know what's going to happen and who's going to be visiting our community in Mount Rushmore. I do think it's good to plan ahead and have money there for it. There's been a lot of controversy about how that fund's going to be controlled, so I'm going to make this suggestion. I think we should create a line item where the $250,000 is transferred from account 4 to 2.500 in the mayor's professional services over to community investment. Create a line item that will be overseen by a committee that will approve the expenditures from that account. And that committee can be created at a later date, or whoever's going to oversee it. But I think that's a way to end the controversy, but still have those funds available for use in case we need them.
Councilman Maher?
Well, I'll just add my thought on that. I agree that the groups, different departments need to come together in a committee and decide what's the best way to spend that money or to celebrate the America's 250th birthday. I just don't have a problem with it having been in the mayor's budget versus now we've got a material change by moving it down the road. Still the $250,000, which I think we're all willing to do, but I don't know why we have to move it out of the mayor's budget. We still get to vote on whatever this plan is. Thank you.
Councilman Beberdorff?
I would agree with Mr. Maher. I don't think that needs to be moved. At the end of the day, this is the committee that was elected to take care of that fund. It's going to be approved here. You know, God so love the world, you do not create in our committee. It's just so much more work. That's what we're here for. The mayor office is going to bring us a proposal, and we can approve it or deny it. So to create our committee is just, in my mind, another bureaucracy and ridiculous.
Councilwoman Seacrest?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to just speak to this as the mayor's office had reached out to me and asked if I'd be willing to sit on America's 250th anniversary celebration committee. And I believe Leabron had reached out originally and shared some of the intention of this role. And so I, of course, was happy to serve on this committee in this capacity as a council leader is on. And I don't know that there are any other council members serving on this committee. So I just wanted to speak on this behalf, that we have met twice now, and we're planning to meet bi-weekly for the next six months to plan the next events. And part of this, part of this effort has included members from Visit Rapid City, Ally Formic, and then Black Hills Tourism and Badlands is also represented in this group, as is the Civic Center. And I feel like those were some of the representation that were mentioned in prior communications to this meeting of concern. So we do also have at least 10 other community members in that committee. And I don't have a membership list in front of me today. But there are also legislative representatives and individuals connected to the governor's office of tourism that are serving in this capacity as well. So far, we have a list of about, I don't know, 150 different ideas and events. And so I know that the Civic Center marketing department will be, will be absolutely involved in promoting the 250th celebration and events. And so I apologize if there hasn't been communication from the city to everybody serving on this council in front of me today. But I just felt an obligation to speak with what I know at this time. So I will not be supporting reallocating the funds to another line item. I feel like, for all intents and intents of purposes, that we're doing that effort right now. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stroman?
Thank you, Chair. I think that little dissertation kind of shows why this is not a good idea. We don't know what's going on. I asked the question at the first budget hearing, what are the parameters here? What's the plan? It's just, it came out, it's just a blank check for the mayor for $250,000 for a birthday party. And that's just wrong. We need to allocate something. But as Mr. Evans said, we need to have a committee. And no offense, Lindsay, but we have someone on the council who's an expert in this field, who I think should be on the council, and should probably, should be on the committee and should probably chair it, and that's Ms. Meyer. I just, I'm just appalled. I can't believe that all this stuff is coming out now. And the fact that we have this event coming on here, and the mayor is trying to convince us, and I wonder if he actually was serious when he made the request. He probably thought, well, maybe they'll give us something. But $250,000, a quarter of a million dollars, for something that, for the mayor's office, who has no expertise in this? But they also have a staff of, a chief of staff, two people that work in the office, and Daryl and the mayor. And I don't know what they're going to spend this $250,000 on. But I'd like to have some oversight on it. I think we owe that to the taxpayers. We need to have some professionals doing this. And I will say one other thing. I think it's probably even illegal, and Joel, you can correct me or you can differ with me like you usually do, which is fine, we're used to that. But, you know, in our ordinances, it says that the city hereby appoints Visit Rapid City to serve as the city's promotion agency in connection with the promotion of the city of Rapid City as a visitor destination for tourism and conventions. The appointment of Visit Rapid City expressly conditioned on the following, and they have several conditions there. That's in 3.18.060. So we're appropriating money where we shouldn't even be appropriating if we just give the mayor a blank check. And then all this behind-the-scenes stuff that has taken place since then just illustrates why this is not a good idea. And to say that we would have to approve everything otherwise, you must not have been listening when Mr. Ainsley answered my questions at the last meeting. But up to $50,000 he can spend on his own. $49,499,99 cents. He can do, spend however he wants to spend it. We don't have any oversight over that under this plan. This is a poorly thought plan. It's not good government. If we're going to have a fund, we need to have a committee, as Mr. Evans suggested, and then proceed in that way.
Mr. Evans?
Those of us who called for these budget hearings wanted this kind of discussion to take place. Those of us who called for these budget hearings wanted this kind of discussion to take place because we're tired of all these clandestine surreptitious sort of goings-on happening that nobody else knows what's going on. I'm kind of shocked that this was not brought up when we asked what this $250,000 was for, unless all of these meetings happened in the past two weeks. Evidently, they did. Because we asked that question before and nobody spoke up, nobody knew there was any committee doing anything. And this is exactly the problem we have with this council and the city government. If you're not sitting at the popular lunch table like this junior high organization, you don't find out what's going on. I guess we need to be one of the popular kids to find out what's happening. But we've got to stop behaving that way and be more transparent. And that's the reason I want this committee to be formed, to be chaired by somebody with the expertise to do it. And so I'm going to hope somebody makes the motion, I didn't make that motion, did I? To approve this transfer of funds over to the community investment funds to be dispersed only through approval by a committee and at the discretion of the council as to whether or not we approve those things as being valid. That takes all of that leeway, the $50,000 leeway out of the, out of the formula. Thank you.
Councilwoman Seacrest, your comments.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to reiterate, in case, um, my fellow council members did not hear, Visit Rapid City is part of this, uh, committee that the mayor has put together. Um, we have Ms. Bennie, who is the marketing director for Destination Rapid City or Visit Rapid City, however we're legally defining this organization. And, um, I think extremely highly of Councilwoman Myers, um, with all due respect, her background is in sustainability. So I think we have the appropriate professionals represented. Um, I know that a lot of the purchases that had been discussed would surpass that, potentially could surpass the $50,000. My understanding is that all expenditures will come through city council, as would a normal, um, financial request, similar to how the council contingency fund is funded. So, for example, we've had discussions about a drone show and bringing that to the community in addition to working with all of the other agencies out there already performing fireworks shows, but making something a little bit, um, different and separate from those items. And the drone show would cost, uh, between $80,000 and $100,000 and that item would absolutely have to come before city council for consideration at that time. So, I mean, that's just something that's preliminarily been discussed. There's nothing been decided at this point. Daniel, our finance officer, has also been involved in those discussions and as well as many other city staff. So I know there's a lot of oversight in this particular effort as well. So, and again, I'm just, um, serving in a liaison capacity. So, um, that's just what I know and, um, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Jason, your comments, please.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we have a clear understanding of what we're talking about here. First of all, you know, we've talked about America 250 celebrations for the past year. I did mention it in my budget address as well. Um, I know I've sent you emails just telling you that this was happening. Just for the record, this committee is really, I got a group of creative people who work in this space. Their steering committee made up of Visit Rapid City, Central State Fair, Civic Center, those sorts of things. The whole idea is to get a brainstorming going on, um, with a group of folks from, we have some folks from within the city, but we also have folks who are doing things, uh, throughout the city already. And talking about how should it be branded and what should it look like and what are some ideas and those sorts of things. Never did I intend that I have a blank check to spend it on whatever I want. The idea really was, as we prepare for 2026, what are a few big things throughout the year, uh, that we could potentially add? In addition, how do you leverage the events you already have? So the Civic Center is looking at concert series, what can we do? Uh, Visit Rapid City, of course, has a slew of activities. How can we brand those in a certain way? The Central State Fair, the rally. Uh, there are many, many community events that already happen throughout the year. So we're just trying to say, how do we get all those groups to kind of work together and say, how can we theme that in an America 250 to make sure we're a premier destination for people to, to come here? At the end of the day, we want to celebrate, uh, this great country that we have too. Uh, we want to make sure that we are a premier attraction from folks all around the country. So, really, I think there's going to be other subcommittees for different events and those sorts of things. But I wanted the brainstorming to start now so that if this budget got approved with $250,000, which you, as the city council, that committee level, for example, the drone show idea that Counselor Seacrest brought up, would come before you. You're going to say yes or no. Um, they'll make a case. But I, it wasn't just me picking the cool kids. That really wasn't the thing. I was trying to think of some community members. Uh, this is a, you know, committee, how do we celebrate America 250? If we have a $250,000 budget, that's awesome. It'll have to be allocated through the city council. If not, how do we still work together to make sure Rapid City is a, is a go-to destination? In addition, by the way, uh, next year, 2026, is the 150th anniversary of our founding. I don't have any funds or anything, but I would like, you know, to do some things with that and love for your input as well. Sorry that, you know, I haven't sent a formal letter announcing that yet. It just felt like it was really pretty much in a preliminary stages by trying to take the players that are already doing stuff and just getting them in a room. And I wanted to make sure I invited a council member and certainly Callie's welcome to come, just nature of her job. We had several people from Visit Rapid City. I was just trying to get some people together to start talking and brainstorming. So, for example, the symphony next year, we, there will be plenty of discussion as the year goes on about how does that fit in to all of this? I think it'll be great. There'll be so many sports tournaments, the firecracker, we're already going to do it, but how do we theme it in such a way that we can take, you know, advantage of it? So frankly, I have no intention of, I don't really, you know, you could ask for every dollar from that account to come through the council. That's fine. Um, I'm not really worried about that. I was just trying to get a group of people that are already doing work in that space in a, in a room together. Uh, literally, it's been the last several weeks that we, that we had, I think, the initial meeting and a follow-up meeting and just to say, what are some of these ideas? And we brought in somebody who's working on the state side and said, what are they doing? Because the governor, of course, has their plans as well. We want to make sure we're in alignment with them. And, um, that's really odd. It hasn't been extremely formal yet. It's been just a lot of ideas from people who are already working in that space, just sitting in a room, talking together. But I anticipate we'll have other subcommittees and things like that. So if we throw a parade, we'll need help on that. If we're talking about, um, you know, uh, some of these other cool ideas that these folks have bantied about, I think that's worth that. So I think we may have formalized this more than it needed to be, but it's hard to get, you know, a ton of people together to get ideas. So I did ask some people to be on a steering committee to help kind of start to generate some ideas. Then it will get formal, obviously, as we start, um, needing, deciding, hey, here's some ideas and it's going to come to the council. I always figure you're the end of the road. You're always going to be involved in one shape or another because you allocate funding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got a long agenda tonight and I'd like to move on. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Uh, Councilman Evans.
Well, I just want to point out that, um, for some reason, can you turn me up? Is it not working? Is it working now? That better? Uh, for some reason, um, my impression is that you picked all these people because a lot of them wouldn't say no. I mean, I'm the council member with the most time because I'm retired. So I can clear my entire schedule and beat anything. Lindsay, for instance, has to work. And so I'm available, but I was never asked. Was anybody else on this council asked to serve on that committee? Raise your hand if you were. So my feeling, and maybe it's wrong, is I'm just not intuitive at all, is that these people were picked because they're not going to say no. And so that is the reason I want, and I've had a lot of calls concerning this. That's the reason I want this to be completely non-political, controlled by a group that is non-partisan and not at your beck and call. And that's the reason I think it's a good idea to completely make it impartial and put it in a different account. Thank you. And I hope somebody makes that motion.
Councilwoman Meyer.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to make an annoyingly diplomatic response probably, but, uh, I think America's birthdays are a really unique opportunity and, uh, I think, uh, $250,000, it's, we talk about all of the funds and I think it will go fast. And happy to do if, whatever direction council is most comfortable with. Uh, I've heard some ideas from the steering committee. I just wanted to say that, uh, if you're comfortable with, uh, how it is at this point, that I don't have an opinion. And if you would like to have a committee, I will be in, I will, I'm not, I'm, I'm fine either way and maybe that's not helpful.
I guess I would like to make the motion to move that $250,000 into the Community Investment Visit Rapid City Fund. And, um, if I could have a second, please. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Roll call, please.
Lehman? Maher? Roberts? Sorry, Strowman? Pettigrew?
Aye.
Seacrest? Beberdorf? Evans? Tamang? Meyer? Does Tiger vote for or?
Joel, what do we do now?
Plus you would also need a, it's not necessarily an appropriation because you're just moving it from one to another, but you would need a majority vote, six votes to appropriate money. So, anyway, so even the mayor couldn't break the tie.
Okay, motion fails. Moving on to the next item, please. There seems to be, uh, confusion about the $500,000 that was parked into the council contingency fund last year. And, uh, Daniel, could I just ask you to explain that, please? Clear up the confusion.
Thank you, Mr. President. During about this time last year, uh, the mayor's proposal for the 2025 budget included $500,000 in the, um, I forgot exactly which line item. I think it was other professional services. Uh, the reason for that, that money was supposed to be earmarked for consolidation of services, um, improvements. And so what had been discussed were enhancements to, um, to fleet maintenance, as well as enhancements, uh, for the parks department, just different things like that. At that time, there was not a finalized plan that was put into place. And so the idea was to ensure that there was $500,000 available for those various efforts. The council at that time, uh, agreed that that was an appropriate, uh, initiative that the city should be, uh, working on in 2025. Uh, however, they did not want that to be under the mayor's control. And so that was placed under the council contingency. During this time in 2025, um, we have begun work on, uh, centralized services, including fleet, including, um, parks, including our street maintenance divisions. Uh, they have taken over, uh, previous contracted, uh, services that the city paid a significant amount of money for. We've been able to internalize those out of savings to the taxpayers. So even though those three divisions, we have increased our workforce, we have not had to make use of any of that $500,000 because we have canceled contracts, um, that made up for more than our costs to internalize those services. So that $500,000 is still fully available in the council contingency for 2025. However, the stated purpose was for, um, consolidated services to try to make the city more efficient. Again, we have started working on that, but we have not made use of any of those $500,000 funds. Just like any appropriation in the general fund, if those appropriations are not used by the end of this fiscal year, then our total expenditures, I'm sorry, our total revenue minus our total expenditures ends up going down into your undesignated cash balance for the general fund. And so if that $500,000 is not used on December 31st, essentially that will go into your undesignated cash balance, your reserves, your savings account, whatever you want to call it.
Thank you, Daniel. Uh, Councilman Maher.
Well, I, Daniel pretty much covered everything. I just wanted to make the point that there was some, a recommendation that we move, we keep this money in the council contingency for next year. I just think that's wrong. We, we didn't, we've only spent $2,000 this year out of our contingency fund so far. We're working on some other things tonight. But there's no reason for us to be putting that money in our budget for next year. I think we should just let it expire. Thank you.
Before I call on you, uh, Strowman, Councilman Maher, just so you know, we've allocated, um, $100,000 this year for the downtown beautification out of that fund as well. So there's going to be a lot more coming out of that, um, other than the, um, $2,000. Councilman Strowman?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to restore that $500,000 to the council contingency fund. And if I can get a second, I'll retain the floor.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, I think that, um, we're the, we're the body that's charged with spending the money. And, uh, we have to have, um, an opportunity to do that. I think that we spend it wisely. For instance, with the beautification funds, we spent $25,000 on, uh, the meals for the schoolchildren that was matched, turned into a $50,000 donation to our, our needy schoolchildren. We are in the best position to make the decisions with that money and, um, not have something come before us. And, uh, uh, where particular people just say yes because of who's presenting it. I think we have a mind of our own. We should be able to do that. And, uh, I think that it makes sense for us to have that restored, rather than just have it circling out in space, undesignated, uh, wondering wherever it'll get picked up for whatever reason.
Councilman Maher.
Okay, well, here's the deal. We're the city council. If we want to spend, if we want $500,000 to go towards some, some thing for the city, then you guys, somebody should be bringing it forward and put it in the budget. Don't just give the city council a slush fund of $700,000 for next year. That's just wrong. If you want to spend it this year, why don't we try to transfer it over to CIP and work on some roads?
Um, I'd like to make a comment. I take offense, Councilman Maher, to a city slush fund. It's never been that. And as long as I've been on the council, not long, this is my third year, I've never looked at that as a slush fund. There are always things that come up in the city, whether it's, um, a nonprofit that's short of money. The downtown beautification is a good example. Um, you know, we could go as far as fixing a street that's in really bad repair. There are always things that come up that we don't have the funds for. It's hard to get it through, uh, our budget process. And if this city council just had a little more flexibility, a little more money, I think we could do a lot, uh, more, uh, for the community. Uh, Councilman Evans.
Well, this is going to be another divided vote, so perhaps it would be more palatable if we moved this $500,000 into the mayor's fund because they seem to support all of those. Just wanted to make that snotty comment.
Councilman Seacrest.
Thank you, Chair. I just had some clarifying questions for, um, Councilman Strowman as our motion maker here. Was just curious if you had some ideas. First of all, were you, are you motioning that we have our council contingency fund be $500,000 or would it be $700,000? So keep the $200,000 and add the remaining $500? Would be my first question, if I can direct to Mr. Strowman?
My, my most would be to have 500 in there.
Okay, so 500 total. And then my other question is just on some thoughts and, and just to understand your background and, and what the intention is. Um, again, and I, I know that I fully support the school fund and, um, the, to reduce the student lunch debt and some of those things. And I know that there are efforts underway with the downtown beautification. I think there's a lot of opportunity there. So I just wanted to kind of get from you if you had any ideas. And then also, what would we defund 300,000 from the existing budget to, um, get that up to the 500,000? To get that additional 300,000. So not, I'm not stating I'm in opposition or in agreement at this point, just looking for a little more information, please. So not, I'm not stating I'm in opposition or in agreeance at this point, just looking for a little more information, please.
Councilman Stroman?
I don't, it's not my understanding that that money is going anywhere but into the general fund. So I don't think I'm defunding any projects. I agree with Mr. Pettigrew. Things come up during the year that there's a need, and maybe it is, maybe it's to buy a garbage truck for the place where we can't get across the bridge anymore. Maybe it's to fix a road. Maybe it's to do downtown beautification. There's all kinds of things. We get brought things to us all the time. And then we have to go, well, go to the department director and say, hey, can we do this? Nope, don't have any budget for it. So I think the council should have at least that much money so that they can respond to the constituent requests as they come up.
Okay, and, and I, I understand anything that goes forward has to go through the city council. So again, even if this is budgeted, we'd still be going through a city council for approval on any expenditures. Daniel, can you just confirm that we would not need to find a funding source to, if I may ask our director? Thank you.
Director?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You do have sufficient funds available in your undesignated cash. With that being said, I was very careful in preparing the 2026 proposed budget with the use of undesignated cash at 3.15 million. I did that because I believe that is a sustainable level where we are not actually going to be using any cash so that at the end of the next year, you're not going to have a reduction in your total undesignated cash because the idea for that should be for large projects or large emergencies that come up. I would greatly prefer that there would be some sort of offsetting savings for that $300,000, but the council is not required to. You're able to make a choice to either use additional undesignated cash or offsets. I would encourage you to at least highly consider offsetting reductions to make up that difference.
Thank you, Daniel. I yield.
Councilman Beberdorf, please.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Maher. I think maybe the word wasn't the best for slush fund. But nonetheless, to have it, just that much money sitting there when precedent is if it's not used this year, it does go back to the general fund. I do agree with Councilman Maher. If we want to spend it this year, then let's spend it. But to move that much, an accounting standpoint makes no sense, especially when we don't have anything budgeted for it. We're just putting that money, there's not a budget for it. And here Mr. Ainsley, I think, made a great case of that, that they have the designated extra cash there for a reason, for that cushion. So you can find it for somewhere else if we are doing that, so I won't support that.
Councilman Evans?
Some clarification, Mr. Ainsley. If the council went to spend, spend their contingency fund for something, what is our limit that we can spend without voting on it? For instance, the president could spend.
You.
Yeah.
You will need to, the council as a whole will need to vote to use any of the money out of the council contingency fund. So with that being said, another option could be that you keep the council contingency fund at 200,000. And if another item comes up, that would be an additional $100,000 of expenses that you weren't aware of, you could do a supplemental appropriation to add $100,000 from your undesignated cash balance to whatever line item is necessary to complete that project. The reason why I'm so hesitant to just increase line items just in case is because we have been working with departments to make sure that they are not padding their budgets. And there's a natural tendency for governments at the end of the year to want to spend any money that has been budgeted. We are trying to get away from that, but that's a natural tendency. And so even through a supplemental appropriation, if the council has a need, whatever it happens to be, a garbage truck or something for the schools or something for parks, whatever it happens to be, you always have the ability to use whatever money you have available in undesignated cash to increase whatever line item, as long as there's six of the 10 of you that are in agreement, you can proceed with doing that.
And that's a two-step process, correct?
Yes.
All right, as opposed to a one-step process, which also requires our approval. So it just hasn't, it's a matter of where at park?
Yes, absolutely.
And the only reason I ask that is we have to approve every cent, the 10 of us that we spend. What was that limit that the mayor's office can spend without any kind of oversight?
Correct, it is under 50,000.
There you go, that's my point.
That's not just the mayor, just so everyone understands, that's any department director under a line item that they are in charge of.
Yeah, and that's the problem we have with transparency in this particular government we have here. And it's starting to bother a lot of people. Thank you.
Councilman Stroman?
Thank you. You know, I don't, I don't want to add another step to the process. It's meaningless to do that. We have 10 people up here who aren't going to agree on anything anyway. I think that's pretty clear. So you know that that $500,000 is going to be well-spent, if it's spent at all. I think that we should have control of that. And the rest of you ought to man up and be willing to make decisions like that.
Couple of comments I would have. I believe the $500,000 would be well-used. I mean, this is a good example tonight with the senior centers. I don't know how Mules and Wheels are going to pay for their new kitchen. I mean, that would just be something we could, with one vote, if, if, if that's necessary, can make that decision. So I am strongly in support of keeping that money and moving it back into the council so we just have a little more flexibility in making decisions to help better the community. Councilman, Councilwoman Seacrest?
Thank you, Chair. I am going to support this request. And I want us to maybe think about this, rather than taking our council contingency and rolling it over to our contingency next year, but rather just funding the council contingency to a greater degree in that budget at the end of the year then rolls over back into undesignated cash. I think that's maybe a little less controversial to think of it that way. And I'm fine if we take this from undesignated cash. We use that all the time to supplement salaries and, and light item adjustments. And throughout the year, we see seven, eight, nine, 10 different supplemental appropriations for us to, to take 300,000 out of that to potentially fund some worthwhile projects. I just don't see a difficult decision in that, and I will support you in that, Greg. Thank you.
So the motion on the floor was made by Councilman Stroman. Would you want to repeat that, Stroman?
That we fund the council contingency fund to $500,000. And if we have to make it, make up the difference from the undesignated cash.
And that was seconded by Evans. Can, we have a vote, so all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Lehman.
Aye.
Maher.
No.
Stroman.
Aye.
Pettigrew.
Aye.
Seacrest.
Aye.
Beberdorf. Tamang. Evans. Meyer. Motion passes.
Thank you. And the last item I had on, on the agenda that, that I was provided, and after this, if we have time, if there are other items the council want to bring up, please do so, is the interdepartmental charges that are, that are being charged to the airport. And I guess the discussion has been, can we defer those costs one year? Until we get clarification from the FAA, will they allow us to do this? And I guess what I would like to see and, or recommend is if, if we're going to move forward with these charges, I'd like to ask Daniel, our finance director, to maybe prepare a letter to the FAA and explain to them your methodology, why you're doing it, how it can justify it. So as the airport moves forward and we're applying for, for funding to, to get our airport, you know, completed out there, we can be walking on firm soil, knowing that we're not going to be in trouble if by chance the FAA reviews where these funds are going and we could lose the funding. So would that be something, Daniel, you would consider?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would be more than happy to do that. However, I, I do believe that the airport director stated that the FAA does not provide comments on interdepartmental charges. It's only after there's a complaint filed. I'm not aware of that, but I think that's what he mentioned during his budget presentation. But I'm more than happy to provide a letter or talk with anyone with the FAA. I have no issue or concern with that.
Councilman Evans?
Evidently, Denver has some sort of agreement with the FAA and their accounting practices for interdepartmental charges. And they use the same accounting software that we are trying to move all departments toward. In this case, I'm thinking for us to come up with an agreement is going to be well beyond our council deadline for getting this budget finished. So I would make a motion to not have interdepartmental charges charged to the airport this year, defer them for one year until we come up with a plan that both the FAA and the city agree with. And I think that'll help us move along and not have a lot of arguing for the next couple of weeks. So I make that motion right now if I had a second.
All those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that. Kevin Maher, please.
Yes, I, I think interdepartmental charges are just common cost accounting. It's done throughout businesses, it's done throughout government. I was provided with some information that says that the Denver Airport, which soon will be the largest airport in the country. The Denver Airport uses city services, just like our airport does. Their interdepartmental charges come out to about 7.5% of their budget. The interdepartmental charges that we're talking about, not just the, we're also talking about police and fire and other services that the airport gets from the city, comes out to just over 8%. So it's very comparable to Denver. I think this has to be happening at all city-owned airports across the country. And I just see no reason that other departments, this isn't fair to the other departments. Thank you.
Councilman Stroman?
Well, I don't think the criteria for making good decisions is whether it's fair to other departments because I don't think we even know well enough the challenges that our enterprise funds have as opposed to what the non-enterprise funds have. And I do know that I've heard from just about every member of this council on multiple occasions that we have to support the airport, we have to support the monument. Those are keys to our tourism, they're keys to our industry and our tax revenue, and that we need to support them in every way that we can. I hear that a lot, except for tonight.
Patrick, would you have any comments on that you'd like to make, please? If not, thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, I think it would be appropriate to do due diligence on that and provide the methodology along with the end-of-the-year reconciliation process to the FAA and give them a chance to weigh in on it. The attorney who drafted the letter to the city is the former counsel, lead counsel for DIA. And is now providing his own shingle. So based on that, he has been involved in the process of making sure that interdepartmental charges are appropriate. There has been extensive negotiations at DIA between the city and the airport. So based on that, there has been a process in place on that. And our, our aviation legal expertise has been involved in that process. Based on that, I do think it would be appropriate for us to pose the question to the FAA to ensure that we are meeting grant compliance. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do that with this. And, you know, typically they do step in if there is a complaint on the back end, and that's usually the normal process associated with this. Going to them upfront, I think, would be prudent, albeit maybe not the normal process with it. But again, that, I think, when you're starting to talk about the amount of money that we get in, in federal grants, especially right now with the terminal process, I don't think it's a time to potentially put ourselves in jeopardy of any issues with FAA federal funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Just a, a couple of comments I'd like to make before you, Councilman Seacrest, is I know we had discussion, we received, or I received, the list of, of the interdepartmental charges, you know, each, each division. And I, I don't know, Daniel told me the equation, how they get there. But it's still kind of a guess, really. You don't know if we're going to spend that much out of the mayor's budget or the IT budget. And I think the FAA is going to want to see, at the end of the year, if we had, you know, $50,000 in there for the mayor's budget, did we spend that? Did, did it go to the mayor's office? And I, I'm going to pick on Police Chief Hedrick here. They send the bill, a bill to the airport every month for every police officer that's out there. We see when he worked, who it was, how many hours he was there, and how many, what he's paid per hour. And I don't know, I don't think that's too much to ask. If we're going to be charging these interdepartmental charges to the airport, that's not too much to ask for every department to do billing the same way. Then there is no question, we can prove it, they see it. But at the end of the year, how are you going to go back and reconcile all these records? How much time is that going to take? I just believe the correct way to move forward would follow the police department's example and just do it on a monthly basis. Councilman Seacrest?
Thank you, Chair. I was just along, along your comments, Mr. Pettigrew. With that, curious from our finance office perspective on the billing and what the timeframe might be working with the FAA. And it sounds like with the DIA, they had worked with the FAA to establish some parameters of what interdepartmental charges could be charged. And so is there an anticipated timeframe? Are we too late in the game right now, in your opinion, to make sure that that happens? Or, I mean, I do believe that this is a, I mean, the FAA is substantially supporting our airport. All of these things are very important for us to, and I know that you, likely, I imagine, you also feel the same way, that that's super important, that we're protecting our ability to pull in these federal grants. So could you please provide a little context there? Thank you.
You want me to provide that? Daniel, you may speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I, I think it could have easily been done in January and February when the report was first compiled and provided to all the departments. That probably would have been a more appropriate time period than in August. To now reach out to the FAA and ask for their input, with that being said, we still can do that. I have no idea whom to contact with the FAA. I think that would have to be led by the airport in providing that. If you wanted to start having actual time allocations for all administrative tasks, I mean, you start looking around Justice Room in the past 15 minutes that we've been speaking about the airport, and you start looking at every city employee and say, every single city employee is going to write on a time card the 15 minutes from today. The timekeepers are going to spend that time. You're going to have the accounts payable people separate airport and say that airport invoices are going to have to record their time, but not the other 11 departments? That is not going to be accurate. I mean, the honest truth is that some employees are going to forget to do that, and they are not going to do that. And the ones that do, they're going to be frankly estimating because that's the only department that is doing that. And I think you can look at Denver where they have indirect cost allocation for finance, for risk management, for IT, for general services, for the mayor's office and the city council. That is the same format and system that is being applied here to the study that was completed by Cherry Beckert. The difference is the direct costs, where that is the public safety, where it's very easy to identify that we have, I think, five or six, five, seven. fire, seven, thank you, um, firefighters who are stationed there. So we're able to say every single day, you know, lieutenant, whomever was there. And firefighter, whomever was there. We're not able to do that with our payroll.
Yeah, and I completely understand that, um, Mr. Ainsley. I, I get that that's a very labor-intensive task and I, I don't know that that would be even worthwhile to increase that, that effort administrative-wise. We need to create whole positions just to uh, bill for hours, which is um, not efficient in any way. I guess all I'm wanting from you is some assurances that we can course correct, that we will make sure that we do this right, that we're not going to jeopardize our relationship with the FAA moving forward and that um, we can trust in that process. And so that's what I'm looking for and, yep.
Absolutely, Councilwoman. I think for any of the departments, any of their funding agencies that have to provide grant assurances, the airport is not the only entity that does that. Um, the, the police department has numerous grant assurances. Uh, we do filings with all of our bond councils on a quarterly and annual and every other basis. We want to ensure our grant compliance so that we're able to get federal funds for every single department, the airport included. But we want to ensure that we are in compliance with all regulations. And anytime we see that we are not, we definitely make the corrections necessary so that um, we can proceed to receive those funds.
Well, and I guess from my uh, understanding, you know, there are charges assessed to the mayor's office or to this and that. And if the FAA comes back and says this seems like um, an exceptionally, or, you know, a charge that doesn't make sense for this, that we can say, okay, that doesn't make sense for us to build the airport and we need to um, take some considerations for this and, and potentially other enterprise funds as well, but um, and maybe make that fair across the board with enterprise.
At sorry.
So, and that, anyway.
Absolutely. If we were to hear from the FAA that they had a concern with any of the calculations, um, if uh, they brought up the city council that the airport should not be charged uh, in indirect uh, costs for the city council, absolutely, we would immediately deduct that. Um, just like we would do with any other department.
Thank you.
So there's a motion on the floor to exempt um, the airport for 12 months from the interdepartmental charges. There's a second. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Uh, we need another roll call, please.
Lehman?
No.
Maher?
No.
Strowman?
Aye.
Pettigrew?
Aye.
Seacrest? Beberdorf?
No.
Tamang?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Meyer? Motion fails.
All right, uh, that's everything that I had on my list that I was presented with. Do any other council people have any other items they would like to discuss retaining or in reference to the budget? Second? Beating adjourned.